Good evening. It is now six o'clock. I'd like to call the Grahamville County Public Schools School Board meeting to order, and we do have a forum. Let's pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Our vision, every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. Our mission, we empower every student, every day. Ask that board member Baker with Lisa Pledge.
Yes, Dan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two, announcement of a change to agenda. Are there any changes to our current agenda? No, no change to current agenda. Ask someone to make a motion to approve the current agenda.
Motion to approve.
On second.
It's been moved up to second that current agenda will be carried out this evening. Ready for the question? Say aye.
Aye.
In oppose? Ayes carried. Next we have reports from our superintendent, Dr. Wimborn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And a good evening, board members, team members, and those community members in attendance and those joining via video. Happy 2025 to you all. I hope you had a wonderful winter break and everyone had a Merry Christmas and happy winter holiday season with their family and friends. It's really hard to believe that we're now halfway through this school year. We truly are with this calendar that we've adopted this year. We're at the true midpoint. There are just five short months left. And senior staff, we were talking about that this morning, and it will go quickly. We have a lot to do, not just in successfully finishing this school year, but in managing all of the changes and preparing for the school consolidation work that's going to occur and be in effect for next school year. Of course, our high schools now are starting a new semester, and they, I'm sure, had a very busy day preparing for all of their new classes to be starting tomorrow. The school choice or open enrollment transfer window begins tomorrow for all of our families. We're working hard on promoting that, so please help spread the word. And just generally, everyone is very excited to gear up and start this spring semester. As usual, tonight's meeting, you will receive important updates from our academic programs, from finance, operations, and HR. But in addition, we'll be giving you some important updates about our work with student reassignments, staff reassignments, and facility transitions related to all the consolidation work. And we plan on giving you regular updates each month about that this spring. Also, our board chair will be sharing the new committee assignments for 2025, and we look forward to setting the agendas for those meetings and getting started on all of the work that pushes through those important groups. On a celebratory note, I would like to bring to everyone's attention that January is designated in North Carolina as School Board Appreciation Month. I know you guys don't get very much love, so it's important to stop and recognize all that you do in your roles as elected officials. This is basically a volunteer job that you have. I know that you receive a small stipend, but that hardly covers what you invest into this role, and I am very, very appreciative of all that you do as public servants. And I want to thank you for your commitment to the children of our school district. It means a lot. As a small token of our appreciation, to kind of kick things off this month, you each have a custom polo shirt there at the table. I hope you will wear that proudly. We, again, just thank you so much for all you do. We really appreciate it. And you'll be getting some more goodies as the month goes on. Also, in the spirit of celebrations, a reminder that tomorrow is our annual winter graduation, and that ceremony will begin at 6:00 PM.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
6:00 PM.
At South Grahamville High School auditorium.
Yep.
We have about 60 graduates planned to walk across the stage tomorrow.
We will be conferring degrees to the largest group of winter graduates ever. And this is a wonderful mix of students. These diplomas are exactly the same as the ones that we give out in May or June and during the summer. Many of these students are graduating early, some just a little bit later, but all are on track to the next important steps in their, in their career, either towards work, the armed services, or with two- or four-year universities. And I look forward to watching them cross the stage tomorrow, and I hope all of you board members can join me, and everyone that's listening to this message will come out or at least celebrate this accomplishment. Lastly, board members, I want to be mindful of our time this evening. In light of the weather forecast, as a precaution, we have canceled all afternoon and evening activities in our schools, and we're going to have a two-hour delay for all students and staff tomorrow, Tuesday, January 7th. The conditions will worsen as we get into the evening as far as the temperature, and any of the moisture that's left on the roadways may cause some isolated icy conditions. So we're going to make sure we get through the agenda tonight efficiently, so you can all get home safely tonight, and then we'll wake up early tomorrow and be assessing road conditions to see if any additional changes are needed. But right now, we will have a two-hour delay for all students and staff for tomorrow, Tuesday, January the 7th. I want to thank you all, and I look forward to a productive meeting this evening, and I will turn it back over to you, Chairwoman Lindsay.
Thank you, Dr. Wimborn, for those updates. Few updates for me. I also like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and also challenge you all to live this year with purpose. That board, board, the title from Rick Warren's book, A Purpose-Driven Life here, live your life with purpose as we go forward in 2025. During last year, I had a chance to visit Cradle Schools International Night here. They have booths with international information. They had dance. I also understand they had a lunch earlier that day as well. I also went to Tar River and visited some of their art explosion of projects for other students there. Art was very, very delightful, and time went into the project as well. And I also had a chance to go to Grahamville Central when the head of law by teacher, they helped support the staff there, and they're very entombed there for one. They are very dear and devoted staff members, and also this service on Friday as well. And tonight here, I also want to share, excuse me, our committee updates here, our committee assignments. So you may not have that, but each you have been assigned to a committee for the school year, and the person from the central also let you know when those meetings will be meeting. I ask that you attend those meetings, and also come back each month and share with the group here what you gained from that meeting. So I would say now we have Ms. Baker on operations, you are Chair of Operations, Law Ms. Hayes, and also Ms. Waters. Academic, Ms. Waters, you are Chair. Ms. Baker, Ms. Anderson also serves on that committee. Finance, Ms. Russell's Chair. Ms. Anderson also the Brett on that committee. Policy, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Hayes, and Ms. Russell. HR Innovations, Ms. LeBret, you are Chair. Law, Ms. Baker on the committee, Ms. Russell. Let's you Lacy, you have Ms. Hayes here, LeBret, Ms. Ward on the committee. Ms. Russell, you on the Teacher of the Year Committee, and also Grammy Foundation, Ms. Baker. You get a copy of these nice problem, your folders, right? They have questions, I will have to address as time go up. Any updates from the committee members here? Start from my left here and go down and share.
Well, first, let me say Happy New Year, and I challenge each board member to pick up your stride so we can all thrive in 2025. I was elated to have the opportunity to attend a celebration at Northern Grahamville. That was a lot of fun. It was after-school hours, and which I interacted with many of the students. And then I was privileged to attend the dress rehearsal for the winter program at Butler Elementary, where I witnessed great upcoming and growing talent among those students there. If that's an inkling of what we're in store for, things are good. Lots of interaction with the students, and it was well-handled. I really appreciated the process that I witnessed on that day. I received an invitation to attend the holiday basketball tournament at South Grahamville High School, which I did attend on the 28th, if I'm not mistaken. And it was quite enlightening. It was good seeing the students with the motivation and working together. They can take that right into the classroom, and hopefully that will be an asset to their learning environment. With the unfortunate demise of losing a teacher at Grahamville Central, I did not only reach out her via phone with Dr. Allen, but I also went to the school and offered any assistance that I could give at that time, along with a few words of encouragement. Because she was thoroughly hurt, and I understand that for it. Lastly, I attended some community holiday events within District Four, just to let the citizens know that not only am I sitting here, but I'm out there with them every day. And everyone, have a blessed evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to everyone. I kicked off December at a holiday concert at South Grahamville. It was a band and chorus event with Holly, and I was so impressed by the kids and the band at South Grahamville is just totally awesome. So that was a great thing to attend. I also was a judge for door decorations at South Grahamville Early College, and that was a lot of fun and got to meet a lot of people there. Butner-Stem Elementary visit, and I was able to get my picture with the Gingerbread Man and the Grinch, so that was enlightening. And I almost got to the snowball fight, but I was running a little bit late, so I'm sure that would have been fun. Let's see. Mount Energy Elementary Holiday Concert. They were amazing kids. I was just speechless at how cute they were, and they never missed a beat, and if they did, they just figured it out. So that was really, really cool. And I also attended the project-based learning presentations at Tar River Elementary, and it was the fifth graders. And they did presentations on whiteboards as well as on their computers, and you was able to go around and talk with them and ask them questions about their project, and they were just so eager for you to stop and ask them what they were doing. They wanted to really tell you and show you everything. And this was on the skeletal and respiratory system and all that they learned there. And then as far as training, we had an onboarding session with the fellow new board members. And I also attended the NCSB two-day class on ethics, and I really enjoyed that because there were board members from just about every county there. So it was, it was real good to meet people from other counties and just speak with them on what their counties were doing. And that's it.
Thank you. To my left? Anyone to my left want to share?
Oh, yes, I would love to share.
Thank you.
Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you for the shirt, Dr. Wimborn and staff. There are a lot of good things happening in Grahamville County Public Schools. I started with the onboarding process. We did two days of that, and that was very educational, enlightening, and inspiring. I also attended the reception for the retiring board members, and that was well-attended and well-appreciated. Went with the central office, to the central office Christmas party on the 18th, and that was fun, and it was nice to see people and to enjoy their festivities. I attended Grahamville Central Memorial Service for Mrs. Summerfield Norris, and I also went to the school on the 19th to express condolences and talk to the principal and staff. I went to Butner-Stem Elementary for their winter concert. I went to South Grahamville for the Holly concert, and I was very, a band concert, and I was very impressed because these students raised over $11,000 for their band program, and I thought that was very, very commendable. I also went to Tar River to the art show, and I loved the way literacy was incorporated with the art, and I had time, I had a chance to talk to the teacher and also to see Dr. Wimborn there and Arcana Commissioner, Mr. Russ May. So it was, it was, it was well-attended, and the principal was just very excited to have that event. I went to Mount Energy Music Concert. They did an excellent job. I did the joy judging at Grahamville Early College. I got to talk to the PTO president, I talked with the principal, of course, and the student body president, and some of the teachers. It was just a very well-planned event, and of course, we had hot cocoa and coffee, and it was, it was very nice, very educational. The teachers and the students spent a lot of time on those doors, and they were so excited to be judged by us. I think that's it. I did go to Butner-Stem, I said, elementary. So I was in district, and I went to the Hollywood. I just enjoyed all of the festivities. It was, it was excellent, and a lot of good, a lot of good stuff.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell.
Yes, a lot of those festivities, that was great, though. I did try to get around to the different schools, the summer schools, but I tell you what, I got around to every school and gave them a treat, every school, and told them how much I appreciate them, the staff, teachers, and everyone. I did.
Thank you.
So, and did get to see a lot of the principals when I got there, if they weren't there, but I did, did. I did that drive-in, and I tell you, to each school, and I think it was maybe a three-hour process when you go from school, starting at Butner-Stem and go all the way around to Tar River, and then come back and then here, but it was great. It's great, just to let them know, they appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
And I did attend a lot of the activities going on for the holidays, the art shows someone already mentioned, at Tar River and West Oxford. You know, the decorations that they had the kids doing every day and putting on, one was pajamas day. I said, well, I can't wear mine. But anyway, they had the pajama day, they had every kind of day coming on to the holidays, and it was great. It was great. And the holiday programs and things of that nature, and door decorations that you mentioned also. I was a judge for the door decoration at the central office Christmas party and everything, so that was great. That was great. And just enjoyed it. But last but not least, I'm going to have to mention this too. My, my son received another master's based on where he's at now, at the University of North Carolina, Wilmington, Wilmington. Went down there and stayed a day or two for that graduation, and I was sitting up, my husband and I, and other family members, sitting up in the stands, and people were walking across the stage, and all of a sudden, I heard a name walking across the stage for the doctorate, Dr. Curran. I said, what? I had no idea he was hitting her, hitting her, uh, yeah, yeah, from, from the college. And my son was there, and I said, oh, my goodness, they called her name, he went over and captured her, captured your college. That was great, just to see her walk across there, and didn't even know that she was going to be there, along with my son doing this thing there. That was great. Congratulations, Doctor.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. What about Hayes?
Good evening. Welcome back, everybody, and Happy New Year. December was a super-busy month for all of us, so I'll try to get through these as quickly as possible. On December 5th, I also attended the South Grahamville Choral and Band Winter Concerts, and on the 12th, the Holly Middle School Band Concert, both showcasing the amazing talents of, of all of our kids. And on December 9th, I was invited on an unofficial field trip down to Harnett County by one of their school board members to discuss their bus patrol program, which uses AI cameras to catch people who break the law by passing extended school bus stop arms, which is a huge risk for our kids. I mean, you know, we have thousands of kids that ride the bus every day, morning and afternoon, so I look forward to exploring the potential of a similar program here in Grahamville County and hopefully sharing that information with you guys in the future. On December 13th, I made some fresh chocolate chip cookies with Creedmore Commissioner Kaczynski, and we delivered those to the staff at Holly Middle School and thanked them for all their hard work this year. On December 16th, I went to the City of Creedmore Commissioners Meeting and watched them swear in their brand-new Canine Officer Luck and their new School Resource Officer, Officer Day, who was already with us, but he shifted from the sheriff's office and is now employed by Creedmore. So Creedmore Police Department and the City of Creedmore now provide us with three full-time qualified SROs, which is really exciting for our schools in that community. And I just want to urge my fellow board members to, especially the ones that have districts that cover Oxford, I want to encourage you guys to advocate for school safety, to, to work with the City of Oxford Commissioners and the Oxford Police Department to see if we can't get them to step up and do the same thing. We also have one SRO that is from Butner Public Safety. And so when, when we were in talks about bringing on this new SRO, I mean, I reached out to individual commissioners and spoke with them. I talked with those people in leadership positions individually. I organized a school campus tour. I attended their meetings, their city commissioner meetings, and tried my best to represent us to make that happen. And I'm super proud that, that such a small municipality is able to provide such an amazing, an amazing service to our school system and help kids, keep our students safe. So I just encourage you guys to try to get Oxford to have that same mentality and just try to work with their leadership there. On December 17th, I had the pleasure of judging the door decorating contest at Early College, and also made it over to Tar River for their fifth-grade project-based learning presentations on body, body systems. And then later that day, I made it to a Holly wrestling match and then ran over to JF Webb because they were also hosting South Grahamville for a wrestling match that night. And that was really fun because all of the graduates who graduated last year, last year were out on break from college, and so there were a lot of the former Warriors that came back and were there to support their team, and they were all, you know, like cheering and coaching from the sidelines and, you know, yelling and just having a great time. So that was fun. On December 18th, you know, made it by the Office Potluck and Games, which was really fun. And on the 19th, I helped collect and organize prizes from area businesses for the staff holiday party at Holly Middle School. And finally, on January 3rd, I made it to the rivalry, rivalry game at South Grahamville, where they hosted the Warriors, and was able to volunteer in the concession stand and serve our schools and communities in that capacity. So ton of stuff going on, and looking ahead, I'm grateful to continue my appointment as Legislative Chair, and really grateful for that, and hope to schedule a meeting soon and talk about my... and talk about my, our legislative needs with our fellow committee members and hopefully lay out how we can advocate for those needs the best. Thank you.
Thank you all, Board members for asking reports, you are being busy, being very visible in our community here and thank you much for all what you are doing.
Madam Chair, if I may just briefly make a comment. I hope the public was able to absorb and soak in just the enormous amount of involvement and participation and attention our board members are giving to our schools. I think this is so important for so many reasons, but primarily, it, our, our staff, they recognize this, they see this, and they appreciate it. It, it really, it's, it's wonderful and it makes a difference to them, but I think it also helps inform you. The time that you spend in our schools with our staff helps educate you about the issues and the needs of our schools. And so, I just wanna thank you again, in the spirit of appreciation, but it, it, it makes a tremendous difference, so thank you.
Thanks for comments, Dr. Wimborn. Let's move to the next item on the agenda, please. Student, staff, and school highlights.
Dr. Curran. So, we have decided to add an item each month that will highlight all of the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. So, just to kinda give you an overview of what this will be, all the information shown in these slides is actually already on our social media because Corey Hammett, who's our marketing specialist, is amazing and she publicizes all of the things that are happening in our schools every single day. So, each month, these highlight reels will show what occurred in our schools the prior month. So, the highlight reel that you'll see tonight will be for December. Corey and I both send this information to our local newspapers as well, so we try to make sure that we have something in our local newspapers every week. We can't control how often they actually put it in there, but we can control how often we submit, so we try to make sure that we submit something every single week to highlight the great things that are happening. We try to make sure that we show academic, extracurricular, and career preparation opportunities that our students have. Corey has also created videos for each of our schools that are available on their school websites and in our district website that is specific to that school. It's a one, little bit longer than one-minute video, we have learned that people will stop watching at a minute, so we, we try to keep them about a minute long, that just shows the highlights of what's happening in those schools. So, in this month's video, you're going to see some highlights from December. December was packed, as you know, because you just talked about all the things you went to. So, what you're gonna see is our Student of the Month recognitions, staff, Granville Education Foundation Grant winners will be on there. We had a student who was highlighted by the Granville County Chamber of Commerce as a student spotlight, so you'll see him as well on there. Spark and Sea Arts Events that happened, Dr. Wimborn covering a staff member's job for an hour where he got to play with little children for an hour is in there. Wellness and retention events that we have for our staff were in there as well. Ms. Angie Salisbury taught our staff how to make ornaments and wreaths and things like that for December, so just lots of fun highlights and we can't wait for you guys to see what we've done. So, we will make sure that we bring highlight videos every month.
Thanks for that, Dr. Curran, highlights from our system. Next, we have public comments, Dr. Curran, you can try to say?
Yes, we did not have any digital public comments this time, but we do have five individuals who have signed up for in-person public comments, so each speaker will receive no more than five minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed thirty minutes total, except by majority vote of the board. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which they sign the end. Substitute speakers will not be permitted and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel matters are confidential and therefore not appropriate for public comment settings. Concerns related to personnel issues may be addressed through applicable GCPS personnel, the grievance policy, or other applicable policies. Profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any individual will not be permitted. Each speaker will be told when they have one minute remaining in their time. The first speaker tonight is Daryl Moss with the topic of Holly.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Mr. Superintendent, it is good to see all of you, Happy New Year to you. I am a product of Granville County schools, some of you may know, some others may not know. I went to Holly, grades one through eight. I am a proud graduate of South Granville High School, class of 1976. Do the math and you'll figure out, I've almost been out of high school for fifty years. Next year, if I make it, that'll be it. And for that reason, I'm gonna need to put my glasses on so I can do the rest of this for you. And I only did my remarks, ma'am, for, for three minutes, so maybe I can give a little fill time. Just kidding, I promise you, I am not gonna be before you long. I, I did wanna say though, I was sitting there thinking, watching the reel, some of the opportunities that, that being a product of Granville County schools allowed me to have, going to UNC Chapel Hill, becoming mayor of Creedmore, and I was glad to hear the comments about the school resource officers and how that's working out and I, I support that one hundred and ten percent. Serving on the Golden Leaf Foundation, appointed by Governor Cooper a few years ago, and actually serving on the My Future NC Board, that is, that has been some fun work as well. So, those are things and being a, a product of Granville County schools, I believe, helped prepare me to do just about all of those things. But tonight, and I'm gonna cut right to the chase, cause I won't be before you long, but I wanted to speak, I know I've sent emails over the years, but tonight, this was of such importance that I wanted to, to come before you and speak face-to-face about Reverend Holly and the contribution, his contributions to Granville County schools. I had intended to bring my mom's 1957 annual from then GC Holly High School, but I decided, I decided against that, I thought that was a bit overkill. But my history with Holly goes way back, I'll just leave it at that. And so, that's why Holly is such a, has such a, an extreme important part in my life. But I'm gonna, I'm shifting my, my focus here a little bit because I come, I've come to understand that this board may be taking some action later this evening on how you may go about honoring Reverend Holly and I, and I'm here to be supportive of that. One of the other things that I wanted to mention, I was doing research and, and learned that, that Cradle, I know it's not Holly, but Cradle is still the oldest active school in its current location in North Carolina. And as I was thinking about what I wanted to say tonight, a quote from Dr. Dorothy Pruitt, who sat on this board some years ago, kinda jumped off the page at me. And this is what she said, "We've probably have five generations," at the time, she's saying, "We probably have five generations at least that have been to the school and they were very much interested in preserving Cradle," said school board member Dorothy Pruitt. I could make, I know it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but I could make a very similar argument about, about preserving the legacy of Holly. I can make a very similar argument about preserving the, the legacy of Joe Toller and Mary Potter, where we are tonight. I think that is all very, still very true. So, I come tonight to ask you to consider whatever, whatever approach you take to honoring Dr. Holly, I hope that you will consider passing that, I hope that you will continue to work with the county commissioners to make sure that Dr. Holly is honored there at the site of Holly School right now, and I really do appreciate your time, thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Mohammed with the topic of Holly.
Good evening. There's always been a desire for the overtly, covertly, or subliminally to keep black learning institutions from existing, so erecting a black school was placed under tremendous restraint. Many people cannot fathom the sweat, blood, and tears that goes into erecting a black learning institution. And that is because black literacy has always been a threat to the institution of slavery. Of course, slavery has fueled the American economy. You know, the idea of closing and merging and repurposing our historical black schools, I'm talking about Toller, Potter, and Holly, a few years back, was a continuation of a consistent effort reaching back over fifty-five years at least, and it was all bundled under this package called budget concerns. And I'm sure you're gonna hear more about these budget concerns as we begin to talk about renaming Granville Central High to reflect GC Holly. Black schools such as Mary Potter, Toller, and Holly were established because black students were not permitted into white schools. So, under these segregation laws, black people became economically, politically, and socially independent. Now, under these integration laws, we lost our schools, we lost our businesses, and we became dependent on others to do for us what's under segregation laws that we were doing for ourselves. As a little boy growing up on Granville Street in the late sixties, early seventies, we heard Bob, from the Bobby shop, Orange Street Schools was gonna close, Mary Potter was gonna close, those rumors turned out to be true, long time coming. So, we expect to hear about these budget concerns sometime in these meetings, talking about renaming Granville Central High to reflect Holly. And as a reason why the school's name should remain Granville Central, opposed to reflecting the rich and powerful history of GC Holly. You know, back then, certain board members had, were very insensitive to the concerns about saving these three historically black schools, but they were willing to stand idly by with forty million dollars being poured into a county jail. Perhaps more board members were not really here from Granville County, most of the board members were not even from here, they're not attending Granville County public schools, nor do their children. So, we're asking you to, for prayers, to, you know, to look at GC Holly, renaming GC Holly, the powerful history of GC Holly, you have the power right now. There seems to be this desire to permanently erase the, the sacrifices of these great men that established these learning institutions, as difficult it was to establish, and now even further. There seems to be this move now that their names, to not even hear their names to be mentioned because of some budgets. We can deal with that budget. We want GC Holly to be the name of this, of the school. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Sally Ann Hobson, Holly Name is the topic.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Sally Ann Maribel Hobson. I live at 122 Carriage Hill Drive in STEM, North Carolina. This statement is to all members of the Granville County Board of Education. I wish to share my thoughts and encourage you to consider them regarding the naming of the newly consolidated middle school in southern Granville County where I live. I am not a parent, nor do I have children in the Granville County public school system. I am an honorably retired US Navy veteran and tax-paying citizen whose paternal ancestors have lived in Granville County since the eighteen thirties. I care deeply about the quality of education in this county, the spirit and pride of place that particular experience reflects. I believe a quality education begins with intentional motivation. The beating heart of why students work hard to study and improve can never be forgotten. Love of school spirit can be a prime motivating factor to encourage excellence. A standard set, the example of caring enough to strive for excellence under difficult odds for the good of our community begins with a name. That name is GC Holly. I strongly request all members of the Granville County Board of Education, consider that name for its enduring spirit, values of hard work, and the resilience it represents. I thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Don Baker, the title is Central Granville.
Good evening, folks. Dr. Wimborn, Madam Chair, School Board, School Board Administration. As you see, I didn't bring any paper, but I think it is time for some people around the STEM area. My name is Don Baker. I do live in STEM, me and my wife moved here in 2008. When I grew up in public schools in Randolph County in the sixties and seventies, we had no problem with racism. We all worked hand-in-hand together. Since I have resided in Granville County, I've seen nothing but love, I've seen students thrive. Our Granville County Central High School, I know a lot of the kids that have attended there, budgets are hard. The school board has, with this superintendent and the school board have had to make some drastic changes due to the financial stability of our country. Things went south in 2019 and they've gotten worse. You go to the grocery stores, our students, our teachers, our parents, our school board, you feel it. What I would suggest is that we continue to hold the name of Central Granville High School to Central Granville Middle School. The school board made numerous cuts and budgets. They worked tirelessly to make this decision. A lot of school teachers and a lot of students have been misplaced and are gonna have to make change. This needs to be about our students. When you make the decision, make the decision that our students, if they had a voice, they will want to thrive academics, athletics, and unity. They do not want nothing but a good school like we grew up in. So, I challenge you, I pray through Almighty God that you will make the right decision for our children. And I wanna thank our school board, every member, the new members, I wanna thank our old school board members, the administration, most of all, Dr. Wimborn, I thank you for your time and God bless.
Our final speaker tonight is Scotty Brooks with the topic of Holly.
Good evening, everyone. The question I would ask is what's in a name? Everything. If we were to change your name today to something else, would it mean as much to you? No, it wouldn't. So, Granville Central, it's a generic name. GC Holly, that has historic, a historic ring to it. If you don't believe me, ask my dad or anyone that went to Holly, that graduated from Holly. You can ask my mother, she graduated from Mary Potter. You could, you can't ask my grandmother, she's in heaven, but she graduated from Joe Toller. She had the same energy that anybody that goes to an HPCU, whether it be A&amp;T Aggie Pride, NCCU Eagle Pride, it was like growing. It was like growing up in a household where you hear these names. It's like, I couldn't wait to go to Mary Potter. Now, I wouldn't have the same experience that my mother had. I knew I would graduate from Webb. But I have the same pride graduating from Webb, and my daughter has that same pride graduating from where her dad went to school. So what you all have is an opportunity. There's no need to go back and say what past boards did. We're going to talk about what this board can do. I don't care anymore what the past boards have done. Those schools, that forces have been closed, and we're sitting in one of them right now where it's being used as an administrative building. So what I implore you to do is Dr. Hawley's name should always be attached to an institution of higher learning, period. Because that's what he built that school for in the first place. So let's keep this man's legacy alive. Also, another issue that you all will be facing is we need safe schools for our children. What that's going to entail, we need more SROs. I've talked to, I went to the county commissioners, I brought it up there, I'm bringing it up here, and I'm going to bring it up to the city commissioners because I believe that the city needs to start kicking in some funds because a lot of the kids who go to Webb are from the city. So the city has a responsibility, in my opinion. So again, you have opportunity to do something great tonight. I implore you to do so. There's a reason why some of the old Army installations that we had that were named after dishonorable men are now being named after honorable men and women. Dr. Hawley was a very honorable man. Let's continue to honor his legacy. Thank you all.
That ends public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Curran. Let's move on to Consent Items 4, 4.1 to 4.4. All these can be approved at one time. Any questions? Will we approve those items?
I move that we approve Consent Items 4.01 through 4.04.
It's been moved, and it's been made a motion that we approve Items 4.1 through 4.4. I'm ready for the question. Is Officer, Officer St. I? Second, any second motion, I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Okay. Then we will pop the second, that we will approve Items 4.1 to 4.4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same right. Ayes carried.
We're down now to Academic Success. Mr. Perry.
Good evening, board members, members of the public that are viewing this presentation tonight. I would like to start tonight by welcoming a couple of these up to the stage. First, Ms. Becky Bishop, Ms. Shelby Hunt, and then Ms. Amy Rice. Tonight, our conversation will be centered around our academically and intellectually gifted program, open enrollment, which is kicking off tomorrow, January 7th. And then we'll give you an update on our academic discipline and our student attendance for the last month. But before we begin, I do want to acknowledge to the ladies that are standing up here. I want to start with Becky. Becky started with us back in 2022. It'll be almost one, three years on the 10th of January. And since she's come in, she has done a dynamic job working with our AIG program. So those of you who were around just a couple of years ago, you've seen the ebbs of the program, the increased number of students that are participating, the quality of the instruction. We have a fully staffed program, and all of that comes from leadership. And so I want to publicly thank Becky and her team for all the work that they've done to rebuild our AIG program here in Granville County. So thank you, Becky, for your hard work. And also, I want to thank Ms. Shelby Hunt for the work that she has done behind the scenes to make sure a lot of things get done. If you guys were aware through the whole conversation with the consolidation, folks had to be informed about where their students were going to school next year. So we worked, she worked three different ways to send emails out to all those families. There were letters that went out to the schools, and there were letters that had to be stuffed and mailed. So she had a small team working with her the last two weeks of school in December to make sure that all of that information was submitted out to families. So I want to thank her for her hard work and efforts with that, as well as her facilitating of that pre-pandemic or the pandemic S R funds. And she worked behind the scenes to make sure that we, with Ms. Hines, to make sure that we were compliant and we spent the money the way we should have. So thank you both for your hard work and dedication to the team. So we'll go ahead and kick this off with our first piece, which is AIG. Always a reminder, here's our goal. By the end of this school year, we want to make sure that we have 50% of all of our schools with the school performance grade of C or better, meeting or exceeding growth. And this is possible. We'll continue to work hard to make sure we do that, set by those things that are listed in the three bullets at the top. Our next slide. So we'll start off with AIG.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Winborn, executive team. I am very excited to bring you an AIG, or an Academic Intellectually Gifted, update tonight. Just want to share a few things about our program. Article 9B legislates that districts in North Carolina identify and serve students as well as create locally board-approved AIG program plans every three years. We are currently in a revision year. And so actually, I will be bringing that plan to you in the forthcoming months as an action item. The language on the screen you see is actually our board, our district adopted definition of giftedness for Granville County Public Schools. Next slide. On this screen, you will see our current identification numbers. We currently have 864 students within our district identified, and that is grades 3 through 12. You'll see the breakdown of our population. 13% of our population is now identified as gifted and talented, and these are the breakdowns. So these are the identification areas that DPI identifies. And so this is how we identify as well. So AI is academic and intellectually gifted, and we have 156 students there. AG is considered academically gifted, which is both reading and math. And we have 166 students in that category. AM is a student who's just identified in math with 244. AR is a student who's just being served in reading, and that's 220 students. Our dual students or our twice exceptional students, we now serve 31 of those in our district, which is a huge accomplishment. We had four when I walked in the door a few years ago. And our intellectually gifted students, we have 47, and this is another huge gain. We had zero when I arrived. So we are very excited to be able to identify and serve our students. We also have a large capacity for talent development. Talent development, our particular program here is a front-loading program as well as a nurturing program where students work with AIG specialists to provide exposure, access, and opportunities to K-2 students across all of our elementary schools. It provides, it also helps them develop the gifts and talents that they already have. And we currently serve 890 of those students who are not actually identified yet, but they are getting what they need to develop that talent. Next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about how we identify students, what we use, and the pathways for identification. So one thing that we have implemented here is we have a universal screener. So all second graders using local norms take the COGAT or the Cognitive Abilities Test. And we use that, and we screen everyone. Parents do have the opportunity to opt out if that's not something that they would like to participate. But since we use it as a universal screener, it's very important that we screen as many students as possible. You'll also see that we have a referral process. So one of the ways the students can be referred is actually through the COGAT with the universal screener. They can be referred for an achievement pathway. We use historical data that students have and any additional data if needed. There's a combination pathway of aptitude and achievement. And then we've just added this year a portfolio slash performance task for those students who may need an additional piece of data. And then according to our advanced course math legislation from DPI, we have automatic enrollment in that area. To give you an idea of automatic enrollment, the legislation states that any student that scores at a level five will automatically be placed into the next honors or highest level course or identification in the areas in ages grades 3 through 5. Next slide.
Excuse me, may I interrupt real quick, Ms. Bishop? Can you back up one slide, Mr. Connor? The changes that you've made with identification, how has that impacted our students? Just in a nutshell. What, I mean, not only have the numbers, the total numbers gone up...
But the individual students, we've been able to really kind of find those kids who, if you just look at national norms, you never find them. But yet, they're in their schools, they're outperforming their peers. They need that extra supplemental and differentiated instruction. And so not just the identification piece, yes, it increases the numbers, but students are getting what they need to be successful. So we do follow the MTSS model, or the Multi-Tierred System of Support. And so based on that model, students do receive differentiated core instructions in their regular ed classrooms. And where we come in for services, we provide the supplemental support with AIG specialists. So elementary students receive supplemental support, an hour, a minimum of an hour each week in their identification area. Middle schools receive a minimum of three hours per month during an immersion day. And they also have the advanced math courses that are available to them in middle school. High school students receive consultation services based on principal and counselor recommendations. We also offer honors courses, AP courses, and college and career promise opportunities for them. Services can include enrichment, extension, acceleration, interest-based opportunities for students such as Genius Hour, durable skills that are incorporated with our Portrait of a Graduate, and then Padilla Seminar. And all of the curricula that we use is district adopted and part of our AIG plan. Next slide. So everything that we do is born out of and aligns with the North Carolina Department of AIG Program Standards, which you see on the screen. And our plan is no different. So it is developed around those six standards, and there are also 43 practices that we have to make sure that we are meeting the mark on. We have an advisory board, which is our decision-making body. And they meet monthly during a revision year and then every other month when we're not in a revision cycle for our plan. And we would love to have any of you who would love to be a part of that decision-making body. Just reach out, let me know. We'd love to have you be a part of that voice. Mr. Perry did mention that we are fully staffed. We currently have four AIG specialists who carry this heavy load. So those ladies, I want to commend them. They are amazing. And they are the boots on the ground and really what makes our program happen and what's best for our students. In addition to serving our students, they also provide professional development for teachers in our district on PD days, and they work with teachers during their PLCs. Next slide. This also falls under the AIG label, so I would like to personally invite you, you'll get an invitation later, to our annual District Spelling Bee, which will be on February 6th. It begins at 6:00 p.m. at Northern Granville Middle School. Any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Bishop?
Oh, yes.
So if I was reading that slide correctly, the one where it showed all of the numbers for the... Yeah, you were on it before. No, actually, it was further back. Anyway...
The breakdown of the...
Yeah, of the students that... Yes, thank you, that one. So at the bottom, it was saying K through 2, talent development 890. So your team is working on developing talent in grades K through 2 for more students than we actually are currently serving in our entire AIG program, 3 through 12?
That is correct.
Okay. How often do you guys get to serve those kids?
So generally, they are pushing into those classrooms. Second grade is more consistent because that's the year that we give the COGAT, and we want to make sure that we're front-loading them with those opportunities. So they're in their classrooms every week. And so with kindergarten and first grade, it kind of alternates. And then some of our principals actually have a preference where it's not a push-in to the whole classroom, but there are designated students based on data who are receiving that talent development. So I would say for first grade and kindergarten, it's a minimum of twice a month. And then also, like I said, it's every week for second grade. And second grade is, the majority is push-in. It's all second graders in the district.
So when I think about students, I tend to think of them sort of on a bell curve generally, just in my head, where the majority of students are going to fall, you know, kind of in the middle, right? And then we serve about 16% to 17% in EC, correct? So I mean, like personally, my short-term goal is like, I would love to see 16% to 17% of our population being served by AIG. I mean, I don't know what that would look like for your team. So I am, you know, a little hesitant about that. But like, I would love to see that because that number 890 is amazing. It makes me really excited.
They are working extremely hard, and talent development is a really important piece that helps towards identification. Because without talent development, you know, we're not getting out there to those kids. They're not getting their opportunities. They're not getting access and exposure that they need. And for some of these kids, it's just a matter of exposure. It's something that they haven't been able to have access to, too. And so I would love to see those numbers as well. I'm super excited that we're at 13% because we were at like 8, I think, when I walked in the door. So we have been working towards getting that population up in the district. And, you know, we continue to work to make sure that we have equity and access, to make sure that, you know, our demographics, we're working towards getting our AIG demographics to look like our district demographics as well.
So speaking from just personal experience, like, I want to say how much I appreciate you guys because, you know, five years ago, our kids weren't getting served hardly at all. I mean, I know in middle school, my oldest got, you know, none. And so from, you know, and then now, I have an eighth grader that gets served on a regular basis. And he loves it. He loves being pulled for AIG. And, you know, my ultimate goal eventually, don't get me for saying this out loud, I would love to have a trained and credentialed AIG teacher in every elementary and middle school full-time. Oh, I know, but like, that's what I had growing up. And I feel like it made, in just one county over. And I feel like it made such a big difference in the path that my education took. And I know that it could for our students here in Granville County as well.
Absolutely.
That's the goal. Long-term goals.
Long-term goals.
I'm not trying to prolong anything, but I do have a question. You mentioned an advisory board. So whom does that advisory board consist of, and what is your criteria?
So really, it's just anybody that would like to be a part of the decision-making body. Currently, we have my entire team, myself, we have district staff. Dr. Winborn is actually a part of that team when he's available. He's so busy. And then we have parents, we have students, we have community members. Really, it's just a matter of anybody who is passionate about the work and wants to help move our program forward.
Okay, so is there no criteria?
There's not any specific criteria. There's not any level of like licensure or academics. Anybody that would really like to serve as a community member or as a parent. Just, we like as many voices as possible because we want to make sure that we're looking through as many lenses as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. When you said talent development, the talent development fits in those categories that you serve?
In our identification areas.
It says talent development K through 2. You serve 890 students. And so the talent development that you're focusing on, it's academic, intellectual, math, reading, and...
Yes, our talent development is service-aligned. So our goal is to make sure that we're front-loading our students and providing those opportunities. So the goal is eventually identification for them to receive those services. So yes, it is service-aligned. Any other questions?
I'd like to echo Mr. Perry's comments and thank you, Ms. Bishop, for your leadership and excellence in growing this program and serving more and more children. Well done.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Have a good evening.
Good afternoon, Chairman of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Winborn, and all our board members. I am here to talk to you about our open enrollment window. Our open enrollment window opens tomorrow, and it will end on February 4th. As you can see on the screen, here is one of our flyers that we're using for communication, where we send out to parents, sharing information. We do that by social media, we do that by phone calls, as well as using our GPS website and school websites. So just to give you a little information about the open enrollment, this is for all students who are applying to transfer or stay at their current school for the upcoming '25-'26 academic school year. All of these students will need to complete an open enrollment application. And a little bit about the process for our new board members. Once you complete this application, there are two questions. Once you complete this application, there are two questions. One, am I registering to transfer my student to my child to another school? Or, secondly, am I registering to remain at the current school for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six academic year? And you have to do this application separately for each student. Also, we have this application online, it will go live tomorrow morning, first thing in the morning. If parents do not have internet, there will be copies made, and I will send it to the schools so that they can fill it out with the data managers and get that information put in before we go through the information. Because once the window closes, we go through all of the information for all of the schools, and we send it to the data managers to go through it as well, before we send out the information to our parents to confirm that they are now being able to choose to go to the school that they have signed up for. So, we are following the registration timeline, the student reassignments timeline that Dr. Winborn gave us. So, this information will go out to all families by February the twenty-fourth. And if you are a student and you are outside of your attendance zone, and if you sign up for a school, for example, if this year you have signed up to attend a school outside of your attendance zone, but when this window opens, if you do not complete this form to retain your seat, then the student has to go back to his or her base school. So, it is very important, and this is why we try to communicate as much as possible to parents when this window is open, that they sign up so that they can make sure that they retain their child's seat. The other thing is that Granville Academy and Early College have a separate application for their two schools, but it will be open during the same week. So, as a district, all the applications will be open at the same week. We will communicate the same timing of when students are notified if they were accepted into the schools. One thing that we did do is that if you are applying for Granville Academy and Early College, we do have a question on the application, that if you are not chosen, then which school would you like to attend? So, we're still giving those parents the opportunity to be able to pick and choose a school during this application window while it's open. Also, we have different schools that are doing school tours. We have parents that communicate and call. As Dr. Curran said earlier, the videos on our website, it's very important. That's how we communicate to our families, the different choice options that we have, and the different things that are going on at our schools. So, we use that as our communication tool, and parents do call and go to the schools for tours. Do you have any questions?
I do. There's a gap on, suppose everybody signs up and they want to go to Northern Gr-
That would be great, but we do look at capacity. So, we do monitor how many students are being enrolled in the schools. This year, the biggest concern will be South Granville, because we are transferring into that school. So, they will definitely have a lottery process for that school.
Ms. Hunt, would you please repeat, who should apply?
Any parent who has a child that is attending a school outside of his or her attendance zone, or any child who is attending a school outside of his or her attendance zone and would like to remain at that school for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So, if, if a parent, their child goes to school in their attendance zone, and they want them to stay there, they don't complete this?
No, sir, they do not complete it.
Only if you want to attend a school outside of your attendance zone, or you want to stay at that school, which you got approved for previously, you have to sign up again.
Yes, sir.
And I like that you have the note on the bottom of that flyer. And, Ms. Russell, that's to your point. A lottery system may be utilized for any school which applications exceed capacity. And, board members, you did get a preview of the criteria for that lottery system, and gave your blessing on that at a previous meeting.
I know that you mentioned social media. I'm assuming that our principals will also be utilizing this in all calls, all month long?
Yes, ma'am.
And, okay, like, like spamming all the inboxes?
Yes.
Because my worst fear is that somebody's going to be like, "I didn't know."
Yes. And that is why we, with the closing of the schools, we were being really open-minded and making sure that we were calling parents, sending letters, mailing them home, so that we would not have parents that say they did not know, so we were giving-
My letter made it.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Hunt, the letters that you sent in December, they included this information as well, correct? About the open enrollment window?
Yes, mhm, yes, it did.
One more question.
Thank you.
What about transfers? Like, if somebody comes in, like, they transfer into Granville County Schools, and then, they want to attend outside of their attendance area, and they start a school, you know, transferred here, or moved here, September, October, November, you know, or after the school has started. How do you handle it, they have to wait until the next?
No, we actually have a spreadsheet where we have information online, so that parents can request. They have to put in information, and I will contact them and find out regarding what grade. We have to make sure there's enough space for that child and so forth, and then, we will approve it, if needed.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Hope y'all had a lovely break. Attendance for month three for our school systems, for all of our schools. Again, just a reminder that ninety-six point five is our goal. And we were down in December, that's been a trend over the past few years as well. I think some people take a little vacation prior to the winter break, and then, there's a lot of sickness in December. And then, of course, our high schools, with our exam schedule, our students do have an excused absence if they have exempted their exams or do not have an exam on the scheduled date. So, elementary was at ninety-two point five, middle at ninety-one point two, and high schools at eighty-nine point five percent. And so, our overall district average for the PMR month three was ninety-one percent. So, if you'll go to the next slide, we'll just want it to give you the trend. So, I haven't been doing this before, so now that we have a little bit of three-months data there, so you'll see, we're pretty close to where we've been matching up. The first month, we were a little bit higher, at ninety-three point eight, just a tenth, exactly where we were last year for month two. And month three, just again, slightly down by about, you know, a point. All right, next slide. So, for behavior, December, short month, so our total suspensions for that month was, was down. So, we were in school for three weeks. So, this is all of the December data, I was able to get that in before we left for the break. And so, our overall referral information, total referrals were five hundred and seventeen, and there you see it divided by the elementary, middle, and high schools. And then, not all of those result in in-school suspension. Sometimes, it's a parent phone call, sometimes it's a conference, sometimes it's lunch detention. But for our in-school suspension, there were one hundred and eighty-five assignments for that, and out-of-school suspension was one hundred and seven, so that's how we led to the two hundred and ninety-two. Top offenses for that month, disruptive behavior, aggressive behavior, and inappropriate behavior. And so, I can't remember whether it was Dr. Winborn or Jamar, you know, we were talking about how these are designated and making sure staff know. We have in our Student Code of Conduct descriptors of what is disruptive behavior, aggressive behavior, inappropriate. We do have to sometimes remind staff of what is the difference between inappropriate behavior, disruptive. Disruptive is disruptive, you know, a student is being disruptive in the classroom, just being individually, they got caught doing something inappropriate. But these were the top offenses for the month of December. And then, again, I kind of like you to see how that impacts students being outside of the classroom. So, in-school suspension days were one hundred and eighty-five, of course, and then, that out-of-school, one hundred and seven, again, for how much they're missing. Next slide is our data over time. So, just remember, September, we were not that low, okay? That was when we were transferring between Infinite Campus. We had started off putting all our behaviors in Infinite Campus, and we had a loud cry of, "Could we please go back to Educator's Handbook?" And once Carolyn Buffalo realized that we could make that sync with Infinite Campus, we shifted over. So, September was that transition. So, then, when you get to October and November and December, you see where we have our comparisons from month to month. And so, November, we were slightly down, and December is, is pretty close in alignment. Nothing statistically irrelevant. Next slide. Any questions about attendance and behavior? This is an area that we're always going to want to improve on. As far as behavior goes, I met with all of our school counselors and Student Services Department for a large group, PLC, in December. And one thing that we were looking at was the whole MTSS process. So, in academics, that's pretty easy. If students are struggling academically, we put in some interventions in place. We move them up tiers. Are these interventions working? If they're not, we move them to a higher tier. And so, we're supposed to do the same for student behavior and even attendance. You know, what's going on? What are some interventions we can try? And the nice, the thing about academics is we have a curriculum, and we have these approved interventions that have been research-based. And so, we need to do the same for our students when it comes to behaviors. And so, currently, we don't have a district-wide curriculum or what we use for student behavior. And these are like the character educations, persistence, how do I self-regulate? When I lose my temper, what are the things that are appropriate for me to resolve those emotions? So, we're looking at some different options. And with this partnership we have with the Thrive Program, with the Health System, we're hoping that they would be able to purchase a curriculum and options that we'd have. So, our counselors are giving a lot of input. We're right now in the investigation stages of looking at our different options. So, we know we want to improve, but we want to give our teachers, counselors, and students the tools to make those improvements. Any questions?
I do. When is the Thrive investigation going to end, or do you have a projected date?
The grant with the Thrive, it's, I think it's a three-year grant that we have with them. And that's one of, when I met with the counselors, and I told them, I said, "What I want is sustainability." That if we look at some of these curriculums or these programs that we could use, you know, what we hear constantly from teachers is, "Oh, here we go again, another program," or, you know, "We're trying something new." And so, we want to be able to have sustainability, of finding a program that if the grant front-loads it and gets that, that we would be able to sustain it through our schools as well, because it is a three-year program with them. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Next, art endorsements. So, again, I told you last month that our students can qualify for high school diploma endorsements. These are approved by the state, and they have criteria. The new one for this year is the art proficiency endorsement. And so, it's, it's outlined about the number of courses in the GPA, that's set by the state. But the other is that for this particular endorsement, students have to have a certain number, forty hours of extracurricular activities, not from class, outside of class. So, all of our staff, arts teachers in the high schools have given input. And if you'll go to the next slide, and click, I think I have it, so that anyone can see it. The approved arts extracurricular activities, I shared this with you all last month, and I changed it so that you could access it and see this, so that you could look over. Because this is what we are bringing as a proposal for the board to approve, that you would approve these activities that would result in extracurricular activities and hours for our students. That one right there. Yes, there it is. So, hopefully, over the last month, you had time to look at this. We have tried to be very broad, so that students, since it's board-approved, we would hate to miss something and a student come up. But we have a stipulation there, if you think of something else, let us know, and I just have to bring it and let you know. But we try to be very broad with the activities that could be approved for extracurricular activities. Any questions?
So, and will the classroom teacher implement these activities?
Mhm, they have, we have a little sheet where the students would list them, and if it's something that a parent has to verify, that they are taking piano lessons, or that they are involved in dance, parent initials, and then, the teacher initials off as well.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this for all students?
All high school students.
Okay.
Any high school student is, you know, can pursue any of those endorsements. The other endorsements, Infinite Campus can figure out if the student has met that, because it's based on GPA and courses they took. This is the one that has that extra with these, the hours. So-
So, this portion of the presentation is a recommendation for action?
Action.
Yes.
I move that we approve as presented.
Second.
It's move a proper second that we will approve the art endorsement presented by Ms. Rice here tonight. With a question, all in favor, it's a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a aye. Ayes, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, any other additional questions?
Mr. Perry, I'd like to back up and just provide one piece of information about our open enrollment that I forgot to mention. We do not provide bus transportation outside of our attendance zones. There are no more shuttles either, just want to make that clear.
It is clearly indicated on the application as well.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
That you must provide your own transportation.
Mrs. Hunt is very good at making sure everyone is aware of that. But I wanted to say it at the meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Dr. Hamm will, will thank us for mentioning that.
Thank you, Ms. Karen, for that presentation from your team there. We're now down to physical responsibilities here, Ms. Hans. But, Ms., please speak into the mic. I've heard some comments that they cannot hear our meetings, those who are at home, so try to make sure you speak into the mic when you give your comments, please.
Good evening, board members. The first finance item on the agenda tonight is our, our budget amendments for, for the month. The first one you see is for our state funds. And you can see that we have increased our state funding by two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. That is adding some of our EC funding to, to our state, and as, as well as the CTE credential program. The next fund area is our local fund, and there is not an increase or decrease to these funds. This is simply shifting between purpose codes. And it's basically just meeting departmental needs and school needs at that point. And then, finally, we have our other restricted fund. And, and this is our Fund Eight, and we have increased this fund by one hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And you can see the explanations at the bottom. This includes a Project Lead the Way grant at Butterstone Elementary, our NC EdCor grant, recycling revenue, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association athletic grant for AEDs and First Aid, digital equity grant, a donation for South Granville High School softball field renovation, donations for McKinney-Vento support. You can see that this is a, Fund Eight holds a wide variety of donation and grant funds. But that is, that is the gist of our budget amendments for this month, and this does come to you for approval. Are there any questions?
Any motion? Questions from board, about the proposed budget, from the signs, anyone, questions? If not, this is actually for minutes, wanting to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
It's move a proper second that we approve the budget amendment presented by Ms. Hans. With a question, all in favor, it's a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item we have is our financial update, and, and this is pretty straightforward if you pull up the budget review. This is our budget review for the period ending November thirtieth. At this point in the year, we were forty-one point seven percent through the, the school year. You can see that top section of our, our local budget in our, within our general operating funds, we've, we've used at that point, up thirty-three percent. You'll see a big jump in that in December, as we paid part of our, of our local supplement out of those local funds in December. Our state funds- Our state funds, right about 39%. That's, that's looking good in my frame of mind. Federal budget, you can see here that, if you remember correctly, not all of our budgets had come in yet for federal. And as of the end of November, that was still the case. However, I will, I am happy to tell you that at this moment in time, all of our federal budgets have been approved and are posted in our general ledger. Our, you can see our other restricted funds still looking good at this time of year. Capital outlay budget is widely expended. You know, we are running through those capital outlay funds, managing projects at the school level. And then, of course, those business-type funds at the bottom, our community schools and child nutrition programs that are self-supporting, again, well within that 40%, 41% range. Any questions about that, about what our budget looks like at this moment? Right. To bring up the next item is our board professional development costs. You can see as of the end of November, thank you, our expenditures as of the end of November total $3,077.74. And that leaves $3,900 remaining in the school board budget, which is about halfway, which is looking pretty good for that part of the year. Any questions about the professional development budget for the board?
Can we go back to the other budget here? What's in our line item for the branding of Granville Central Middle School? The money, that's come from capital outlay money? Is that we're going, the naming, things like that? Is that?
Well, that's kind of a, that's not in this budget at all right now.
Okay.
Right. So however, that could be out of capital outlay or from local. What we've done previously, and I believe what we've said this time, is that we would use fund balance. So that would be our local funds for these consolidation costs. However, capital outlay is part of our local funds. So that could definitely be an option.
Any questions about the budget amendments?
And that was all informational? Are there any questions?
So, I'm sorry, can you scroll down to capital funds?
Sure.
Down a little, little lower?
Yes. So I was just looking back because that number, the number jumped out at me. The percentage to date was, is 71%. So that's significantly higher. I think in December, looking back, it was like 48 or 58.
Correct. You're absolutely correct. And what happened there? And you can see that that remaining budget has significantly gone down. And that's because, if you remember correctly, a good, a large portion of that was our, what we call our 920 money. That's our county money. This is the remaining funds, it was one, we started the year with 1.7 million remaining from our county funds based on, for HVAC and roofing, right? And what happened during that month is that we finished some projects. Some projects had to go to the county to be paid. So that's basically just gone on our books. The difficulty is, in this, I may be incorrect on that because I believe we had to make a correction and I'm not sure if that correction was made. So let me double check on that. And so I'll present that to you guys next month.
So the percentage might be wrong?
It might be wrong. Because we were having a problem and I, and I'm, at this moment in time, I cannot remember if it was fixed. So let me get back to you on that. Basically, we put in a purchase, it's a long story. We put in a purchase order to account for it, but then we have to account for it in a different way. And for a while, it was doubled. So let me make sure that we did pull that back. I know we have since then, but I'm not sure if that reflects it.
So it looks like the difference in the remaining budget is only about $600,000 from December. So in December, it was just over 2 million. And then now, it's 1.4. So, I mean.
It was a significant, I mean, these are large expenses. So yes, it was about 600 to 700,000 that we're talking about that was paid.
Do you remember, like, not exactly every project, but what, the big one or the big two?
It was the roofing. It was, I believe it was at CG Cradle or Butler Stadium Middle. I'll have to look at that to be sure. And there was another piece to it. I'm sorry?
I think you're correct. You are correct, those two.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hans, for the update from your area. Health and safety operations facility. Dr. Kerr, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The operations update will be relatively quick. So we have really focused a lot on the facilities transition at this point, and we are just starting that process. So so far, we have had the planning meeting, which we had December 2024, where we discussed everything from the order in which we will have the move, to what needs to be done before, during, and after the move, to things like, we need to make sure we order extra dumpsters because we don't want to forget that. We might have more trash than we're used to. You know, everything that we could possibly think of, we have tried to cover in those planning meetings. And so our goal from this point forward is to start with the project manager, who is going to be part of the personnel report tonight, and then meet again to start contracts and move that process forward. Each of our areas in operations, technology, child nutrition, safety, all those different areas, have already started on their individual projects that they have. For example, in technology, we have multiple pieces that were purchased with CTE funds or Russ Grant funds or all these different funds. And so poor Mr. Connor and his team has been trying to figure out what, you know, item comes from which budget and whether that can be moved or if it has to stay in the building that it's in. So all those processes are coming. And then in March, we will really prepare so that in the beginning of June, we can move everything. We're also trying to talk through all the lessons that we learned from the last move about things that did not go well, such as moving teachers' personal items. That did not go well. So we won't be doing it this time. They will be moving their own, you know, things like that. So that's really it for this part. There's not a huge update otherwise. Any of you have any questions? Which is the next one?
Will Ms. Daisy be helping with libraries?
Yes.
Yes.
She's already begun, in fact.
I was gonna, okay, good.
Yes. Mr. Perry's been working with her to think well in advance on those issues.
Yes.
A lot of weeding.
What does she call it? She's weeding now, right? Weeding the collections.
Right. Because I know that there's.
Inventorying.
Right. And that needs to be done. And now it's going to be on such a larger scale than, than just the one school that she had to do before. And so that's quite the undertaking.
Yes. Yes.
I know she'd be glad if anybody wants to help and come move boxes. Because they are quite heavy.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Kerr. Next, we have honor the legacy of Reverend G.C. Hawley. Is that Dr. Wim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Connor, if you will please go to the first slide. I prepared this presentation tonight in response from, I believe Ms. Waters' request the December meeting to address the topic of changing the name of Granville Central Middle School to G.C. Hawley Middle School.
G.C. Hawley Central. Including the name Central.
Okay. Yes, yes. And after conferring with the board chair at her request, I, you know, put all of this information in a single presentation to help remind new board members and just reinforce the actions that are taken thus far and where we are, and as well, provide an alternate proposal for how we can honor Reverend Hawley's legacy. So, action taken thus far, this is just a little walk down memory lane. In January of 2023, the Board of Education voted six to one to close Creedmore Elementary School and to relocate G.C. Hawley Middle School to that campus. Then, that summer of the following year, the board voted five to two to sell, and I put that really in, maybe should be in quotation marks, to transfer the ownership of G.C. Hawley Historic Campus to the county. And while no sum of funds were exchanged, there was an agreement that was reached to significantly increase the capital outlay funds by large margins over the next several years. So it essentially, it's doubled and then will continue to expand moving forward. Following that decision this past summer, the board voted at the November regular meeting, seven oh unanimously, to close Granville Central High School, to move those students to J.F. Webb and South Granville, to close G.C. Hawley Middle School and Butler Stadium Middle School, and move those students to Granville Central High School campus, and rename that school Granville Central Middle School. So again, there's a lot of parts to that motion, but the last portion, I believe, is the pertinent piece to this conversation. The board did vote unanimously in November to rename that school next year.
Let me make one comment here, Dr. Wimborn.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get to that point, I know that you and your team applied for several grants trying to save Hawley, like with the monies for renovations with the Umbestas, the mole, all those things in the school there. And even though the school was sitting there empty, we were still paying insurance for security and things of that nature. So we're still, were losing money on empty building there. And as you know, when we lose kids, we lose money. And we have found, there's no other way that we could survive in a very declining enrollment in Granville County, just to sell that property to, to the state of Granville County.
Yes, ma'am.
With some things that we said they would have to do in order to keep the name alive at the current G.C. Hawley campus right there. So that's where we are, that's where we are now on that. So make sure that they know we tried everything possible to keep that school going, but money just was not there, the grants and things we're trying to do, it was just impossible.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, those bullets don't really accurately reflect the amount of work and effort that went into trying to find different solutions around this problem. Next slide, Mr. Connor. I would like to point out that, you know, during all of this work honoring the legacy of Reverend Hawley was very, very important. Members of the Alumni Association, including the granddaughter of Reverend Hawley, Linda Edwards, came to countless meetings and spoke at public comment and shared their ideas and opinions. I think they met with board members at different times. There were a lot of emails exchanged. And it's important to note that part of the agreement in transferring the ownership of that campus to the county, you can see those two bullets right, right there. The Granville County Commissioners agreed that the name of the new recreational facility complex would bear the name of G.C. Hawley. And that is included in a letter that was signed by their full board, sent to our board in April of 2024. And then the actual contract of transfer included this following language, and it's a direct quote there. "The property shall henceforth be known as the G.C. Hawley Athletic Park," or some similar name incorporating the name G.C. Hawley, "and shall honor his legacy through historic artifacts and information displayed on the property." And, you know, those assurances were given repeatedly, but they're also, and Ms. Dubson, you may want to speak to this, part of a legally binding document.
That's right. And that contract is recorded.
I think that's very important to note, that that is ironclad. I would like to also just make sure that you guys are aware, all of those documents are in board docs, if you want to go back and search for them. Next slide, Mr. Connor. So again, you know, the recommendation of Dr. Lindsay, and I'll let you maybe speak to this, we, there was an alternate idea proposed because we know that that property, the site of the school, will still bear his name in a very prominent way. But perhaps there's something additionally we could do here in the school district. And we talked about the possibility of renaming the media center at the new Granville Central Middle School in the same way that we did with the media center at Tar River Elementary School. This, of course, would avoid an estimated $300,000 of additional rebranding expenses, which that information has been shared with all the board members, and I think it's pretty well documented. It would also keep both of the merging middle schools on equal footing when they come together, which is, I think, very, very important. I know that, you know, when this was brought up in the board meeting in December, there were a lot, there was a lot of negative feedback from the faculty and students and families at Butler Middle School who felt it would be unfair if their school lost their name but the other middle school kept theirs. So, you know, just from a sort of a student perspective. And this way, we could also honor the legacy in a school setting in addition to the naming on the historic campus. I will share with you all that I did let Mrs. Linda Edwards and Mrs. Lottie Hall, I believe her name is, know that this was an agenda item for tonight. And they reached out to me and I spoke with her by phone, Ms. Edwards by phone, on Saturday. And she said that they fully support this action, this recommendation tonight, and that they were not actually interested in pursuing a name change for the school. She said I would, she was happy for me to share that with the board. So, next slide, Mr. Connor. There's just a picture of, an example of what we've done at Tar River. For your reference, we could do something similar, of course. His portrait actually is right there behind us. We could use that one or make a copy of that, or if the Alumni Association wanted to do something different, we could, you know, see what their preferences were. Next slide. So the recommendation per Chairwoman Lindsay that we're bringing tonight is that we dedicate the media center at the new Granville Central Middle School as the Reverend G.C. Hawley Media Center, complete with a portrait plaque commemorating his contributions to education of children in Granville County. So, Dr. Lindsay, if there's anything you'd like to add to that?
I just think that this is the one way that his name would honor in both, two locations in Southern County, at G.C. Hawley Middle School and also at Granville Central. And being at the media center here, it says that reading is a lifelong learning type thing here. And we learn to read, it's lifelong. So therefore, his legacy will live forever in Granville County. And all kids, we want to educate all kids here. So if you come from Hawley or Granville Central, I mean, or Hawley Middle School or Butler Stadium Middle School here, that is our goal. Our kids will be lifelong learners in a school where it's been honored by Reverend Hawley, honored by at these previous grounds as well here. But like Dr. Wimborn said, to have kids come from two different environments here, we can't choose one side over another. I think it creates really more tension than trying to name it, trying to, I guess, meet the needs of people from the community here. We tried to keep Hawley open, we couldn't do that. This, I feel is our best option, trying to keep our kids at Ch in Granville County schools. I'd like hearing more comments from the board before we put to a motion.
I guess I'll be the first one to speak up. First of all, let me say, thank you, Ms. Hans, for the information that you sent me. I appreciate it. Work well done. I believe in giving kudos where kudos are due. And I realize and I respect everything that has been said tonight or presented. However, my mindset tells me that that's not quite enough. Reverend Hawley helped to preserve the valuable educational legacy and impact that continues to exist through those past students from Hawley. And he left a mark of his legacy on all that he came in contact with. He made it one of his primary goals. I just kind of went back, although I knew him, but that was at a young age, kind of went back and did some scouring, as I like to say sometimes. And in gathering my information, I know I did, I spoke on this before, but he should be considered a pioneer when it comes to this. Because the legacy that he built reflects supporting and leading not only his students and his staff, but the community. He gave 100% of himself regardless of what it took. He gave 100% of himself regardless of what it took. And I did, you know, go back and do some searching and looking, and I know I presented the proposed name for the school, and I know some money was mentioned. Now, with adding the word, with adding G.C. Hawley in front of the Central Middle School, is that still the same amount, or would there be more? Is that the amount that it would be regardless whether, whether what I'm asking for is passed or not? I kind of wanted to know that. That plays a great part in my thoughts. And at this point, I, last month, I shared about Reverend Dr. Hawley, and I've done so this time. An outstanding and influential educator, community leader, community support person. And what he has done is still here. He touched so many lives. Many of these students, right now, if they look back, I'm sure they have family members that were under, in school, under Reverend Hawley, as I, as I grew to call him. So in saying all of that, I was wondering, I would like to move that we vote on this proposal, whether it passes or not. I would like to see a vote done, if at all possible.
Board members, are you ready for a vote?
I'm sorry, what's the motion?
Yeah, what's?
I move to vote on the proposal naming the school G.C. Hawley Central Middle School.
Y'all have a second. Yeah, I heard the motion, it's second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
Let's go around and do our felt sign. Raise your hand for the aye vote for changing the school the name of G.C. Hawley Central Middle School. Yes. Board Member Waters, Board Member Russell. Those opposed to naming the school in that, in that name, please give your name and go around the table. Show of hands. I'm sorry, show of hands. So we will not change the name, G.C. Hawley Middle School, to reflect the motion, it remain as stated in minutes in our meeting, previous meeting. Is there a motion? Okay, all right. So we need to now do the motion to dedicate the media center at New Gramble Central Middle School as the Reverend G.C. Hawley Middle School, to complete with a portrait of plaque commemorating his contribution to the education of the children of Grand River County. I need someone to put in a motion, a second.
I make a motion for G.C. Hawley's recommendation to dedicate the media center at the new Gramble Central Middle School as the Reverend G.C. Hawley Media Center, complete with a portrait plaque commemorating his contributions to the education of the children of Granville County.
You get a second? It's been, and a second? So we do not have a second to name the media center? The motion dies. All right, so that will move us to, I guess, to the next item on the agenda, human capital management.
That will be Dr. Curran.
Good evening again. So, have a brief human resources update. If you kind of can see the timeline for staff reassignment, we are through about almost the first half. We have sent out the interest survey. It closed the day that we had Christmas break begin, and about 740 of our staff members completed their interest survey. There are actually more who have since then emailed me to say, oh my gosh, I forgot to complete it, this is what I want to do. So we have, I feel like we have a really good representation of the plans of our staff members next year at our schools that are impacted by consolidation. All but two staff members have responded at this point. So again, I feel like we have good information there as we're making these decisions. Our initial staff placements have begun. We did notify all the head custodians and other custodians of where their placements will be next year. And so that first round of placements was completed. Next round of placements will start this month, and we anticipate that'll be our clerical staff members and our CTE teachers, who will be notified of that by the end of this month. So, you know, that is mostly based off of ADM predictions and what we have. So we're, that was the easiest place to start for teachers, based off that information. Additional staff placement decisions will occur in February, and those will happen for core teachers after we have the open enrollment information. We really won't be able to place teachers until we know exactly how many students are going to be in those buildings. So once we have that data, we'll be able to move forward there. And then, any transfer requests that are maybe outliers or things that we don't quite know yet, we'll kind of incorporate that as we need, we need to, as we move forward. And our kind of final transitions will be appointment of leadership positions. So we will let our school leaders know in March about where they will be next year, and then athletic assignments will be made after that. We have some discussions that we're going to have with principals about athletics, because I feel strongly that they need to be involved in that process. And so we will try to come up with something that's fair to everyone, so that coaches that have been with us for many, many years, whose school is being closed, will not be disallowed, I guess, or unfairly treated when it comes to athletics. So, anybody have any questions about this part?
I have a question, Dr. Curran. I see here that the principal will not be named until March. Will they have any say so to staff at their schools?
So they will not have say necessarily over the specific person, but they will have say over the courses taught. So once we have named those principals, we will provide them with, you know, any kind of data or information that they need to determine, you know, which of these X number of science teachers will teach these different science courses, which, you know, social studies, same thing. So they would have flexibility and leeway. They'll work with the academic team, Ms. Salisbury, Mr. Perry, and anyone else that we deem to be relevant to help them making those decisions. But we felt like they needed to have some say in that.
What is the rationale there? You know, as the principal, I'm sure you can recall, you had some say so in selecting your staff at your school, and sometimes a teacher wants to know who's going to lead that school, where they want to go for that year. So it's almost, almost weakening their leadership role at their school. So, anything be done about that? I just feel like they not getting full autonomy, autonomy to lead.
And I will tell you, Dr. Lindsay, we have had lots of these kind of circular conversations about this kind, this topic. But the long and short of it is, we have to place teachers. And a lot of the principals who will be in those leadership positions won't know the teachers they're getting anyway. So unless we're going to have open hiring again and make all of our staff members reapply, there's really not a good way to do that, because they still won't know who those people are when they, they go to make those assignments. So we felt like the process we came up with was the most fair to principals, but also to current staff members.
Okay, thank you.
And just to reiterate, I had, what are we using to decide who goes where?
That's the next slide. So if you will, go to the next slide. So our reassignment factors are all on the screen. Of course, there are some things that are specific to classified staff members and some things that are specific to certified staff members, but the reassignment factors are based off of the rubrics that were created out of the HR Innovation Committee. And many of those things are things that are legislatively required or by board policy required for us to look at if we were to have to do a reduction in force, which we don't anticipate, but, you know, we got to be prepared for everything, and so we're trying to be prepared for everything. But it also will help us to determine where we are placing people. We also want people to feel like they have some type of say in that, so we have included their intent form responses. And, you know, I'll give you a great example. When we got down to the nitty gritty with our custodians part, while we started there, is because we had a place to put everybody because of our vacancies and kind of how we had strategically hired temps for that. We had three people left. They all had the same score, so I went and pulled where they live and tried to make sure that we were accommodating, you know, their travel time every day, so we didn't greatly increase somebody's travel time. Now, if they haven't updated their address with us, I can't control that, but, you know, we do the best we can. We've also tried to make sure that we are, are just cognizant of things like, students need to see people that they're used to. And we have a large number of students in the southern end of our county who will be going to the northern end of our county. And so, you know, they need to see some familiar faces in the northern end of our county as well. And so, you know, there are going to be some things that are not popular with everybody. Some people are super happy, and some people are not. And that's just kind of how, how it works. But we're trying to be as fair as we possibly can through this.
So I went back and looked at the November work session and realized that none of this, like, not a single sample rubric was attached in Board Docs. I'd be super appreciative if we could either attach one here or, or back when we approved them retroactively, I don't, I don't know which one is, is better, but I did have, somebody asked me if we were using a lottery system to decide where our staff was going, and I was like, I don't think we're talking about the same thing.
No, we are not, and we have, I will absolutely send that information to you all. I will say that we have communicated this to our staff since August, well, since, I guess, September, and they have been shared, been given the rubrics multiple times since then. So our staff does have that information.
It was a member of the community, not a staff member. But I also think it'd be beneficial for new board members, because they obviously weren't sitting in on HR committee or any of that, when we just made those decisions.
We can get that done, it's not a problem. Thanks to you tonight. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Curran.
Thank you so much.
All right, bring us down to a break. I'm going to break to the break, see if someone, please make a motion to go to a closed session. And we're open for my break.
Motion to go into closed session as stouted in 10.01.
It's been second, proper move, all in favor, say aye. Go to the break. Move a proper second, then we back over to session, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same right, ayes, carry. All right. We'd like to.
I would like to make a motion that we extend Dr. Winborn's contract for an additional two years through June 30th of 2028 with the, a cost of living salary increase to 4.5% effective June 30th, 2025.
It's been moved in proper second that we will extend Dr. Winborn's contract to 2028 and also at a 4.5% cost of living raise. Ready for the question?
June 30th, 2025.
Effective June 30th, 2025.
Can we, can we make that July 1st for payroll purposes?
Yeah.
July 1, 2025.
July 1, 2025.
So someone needs to second.
Second. It's been moved in proper second to the said amendment and approval for Dr. Winborn's contract to July 1, 2025, and also a 4.5% cost of living raise. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes, carry.
I would like to make a motion to promote Mr. Jamar Perry to the role of Associate Superintendent effective June 30th, 2025, or July 1st?
July 1st.
July 1st, okay, 2025. And to also extend the contracts of our Assistant Superintendents to match those of Dr. Winborn's through 2028. And then to also give our senior staff, including Mr. Perry, Mrs. Hines, and Dr. Curran, a 4.5% cost of living salary increase.
A second.
Oh, and to, sorry, and to ask the board attorney to draft contract amendments to bring to next month's meeting.
A second.
It's been moved in proper second to say motion, all ready for questions, say aye. And opposed, ayes, carry.
Thank you so much, board members. I definitely appreciate all of your favor.
And I would like to make the motion that we approve the personnel report that was presented to us earlier by Dr. Perry.
It's been moved in proper second to say motion, all in favor, say aye. You got it ready?
No, I have to recuse myself, I can't.
That's right.
Because my niece is on the list.
All right, well, that one recusal, so ayes, carry. Motion carries. Okay. That brings us down to, I'm trying to open session, upcoming events for tomorrow night. We have a graduation at South Gramble, be that 5:30, with your outfit on for the program. And anything else? Okay, January 7th is the one graduation. January 27th is the Board-Council Commission Joint Meeting, 6:30 here at Mary Potter. And February the 3rd, Board meeting again, 6 o'clock here at Mary Potter. Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I am working with Drew Cummings on the agenda for that joint, joint meeting, and we'll get all of you a draft, a first draft, as soon as we have that. In addition, Ms. Curran is looking at some dates to hold tours of J.F. Webb High School and South Gramble High School, specifically for our new board members to kind of get a real behind the scenes look. Of course, all board members are welcome, and we're going to invite our county commissioners to join us as well. We plan to have those tours prior to the joint meeting. It'll be an opportunity for you all to see firsthand all of the needs and good things about both campuses.
So, I have a question.
We'll get those dates to you.
I have a question about the dates for the committee meetings. Were they supposed to be, they're going to be set?
Yeah, all the senior staff will send you their, their meeting dates here by email, and that way you'll be to know what time those meetings are being held and to that, all that degree. Let me just pause right now and just thank all the board members for their full engagement tonight and our board meeting tonight. And please, once you leave here, please hold the office of the Grand River County School Board, board members with high regards to integrity and commitment, because we play a very vital role in this community, in this community here as being board members here. And they want us to make good sound decisions here. I think we're on the right pathway to have a good year this year. Thank you once again for your commitment.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Please go home, drive safely.
Safe travels.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye.